Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 25th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Amy, you have a roll call, please?
Pierce, that?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Gagne?
Here.
Morsset?
Here.
Odine?
Here.
Page?
Here.
We have approval of the minutes from the February 11th meeting?
I move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we'll have the approval of the bills with Mr. Page.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the bills in the amount of $6,117,289.14, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move into public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Okay, we'll move on to, we're gonna have an update on economic development, our marketing plan, and our development specialist Carrie will give us a presentation here.
Counsel, so tonight I will be discussing the River Falls Economic Development Marketing Plan, which is a comprehensive, integrated marketing plan focused on the sites within the cities for corporate parks. This was a project that was included in the administration's 2017 through 2019 work plan. So in April 2019, the city hired AD Advantage to help create the city's first economic development marketing plan. AD Advantage conducted preliminary research, and they also visited the city, toured the corporate parks, and met with city leaders throughout the city, so government officials, city staff, local business owners, economic developers, and representatives from the university over their two-day period here in River Falls. From their research and site findings, they included the recommendation that the city's marketing plan should focus on audiences that are most interested in greenfield development, since River Falls does not currently have a supply of available industrial buildings. They also found that RFMU and the city's educational assets contribute to the city's competitiveness for business attraction. AD Advantage also recommended focusing on identifying a relatively small number of well-qualified prospects and working with them individually. And finally, they found that for a variety of reasons, all of the local business owners they spoke with identified the city as the best place to refer new business project opportunities. When developing the strategies for the marketing plan, AD Advantage focused on high-touch strategies, and they prioritized tactics that they believed were the most needed. The first tactic, or the first of the four strategies, is to position River Falls to better compete nationally and internationally for new businesses. The first tactic under the strategy is to develop a regional profile that highlights the city. AD Advantage created this regional profile, and I've provided a copy at your seats. This profile focuses on the workforce in River Falls, available land, and the community as a whole. Staff will start distributing these at different events, and we'll hand them out to companies who are interested in River Falls. Improving our web presence and creating a dedicated economic development microsite within the city's main website where businesses, realtors, and site selectors can find more detailed information on economic development in River Falls is the second tactic. Tactic number three is to conduct a business park lead generation campaign to arrange meetings with qualified leads that have greenfield projects and are interested in Midwest locations. Creating digital direct marketing campaigns that target the Fortune 1000 executives in the Twin Cities region is another tactic. The final tactic under this strategy is to create a video focusing on the greenfield opportunities in each of the city's four corporate parks. The city's communications intern, Josie Hayes, has completed two of these videos, and let's watch the one that she created for Sterling Ponds. and both of these videos are located on the city's website, and I have been including the links in our request for information packets that I send out to interested businesses. The second strategy is to market River Falls to Minnesota commercial realtors. According to AD Advantage, realtors are more open to marketing communication than site selector consultants. The tactic of creating a pitch presentation that staff can use at a variety of events around the region, and pursuing presentation opportunities at the Minnesota Real Estate Journal events and other events like that, are two ways for the city to build awareness of our greenfield development assets among the Twin City area commercial realtors. The third strategy is to implement a customer relationship marketing strategy. Like I mentioned earlier, AD Advantage recommends the city focusing on identifying a relatively small number of well-qualified prospects and working with them individually. This, along with investing in a qualified prospect data list, will lead to a large amount of information of prospects. Investing in a customer relationship management system, or CRM, will help to manage and organize the prospect and lead data that the city receives. The final strategy is to institute measurement strategies to determine the effectiveness of the city's marketing efforts. The tactic for this strategy is to biannually survey the Minnesota commercial realtors to measure the change in awareness and attitudes regarding River Falls. As we move forward with our economic development efforts, staff continues to evaluate the Economic Development Marketing Plan, and we continue to work on an implementation plan. This concludes my presentation. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Anybody have any questions for Carrie?
I do have one, if I may, Mayor.
Yeah.
Who's the best person for prospective business owner that's looking to come to River Falls? Who's the best person or entity for that person to contact to find available, not just lots, but maybe open storefronts, different business fronts?
Yeah, so I think any of the staff in the community development would be able to do that, but usually I focus, and that's what I do. I help them find lots that might fit them, or I keep a list of available buildings on Main Street. So I really help with that. So I'd be a good person to contact.
If a business moves out of town and say there's an open spot there, is that something that you're constantly looking at?
Yeah.
And kind of just keeping up with as these business movements?
Right, yeah. I'm trying to always keep up, keep a list. The CRM tool that I mentioned would help with that in the future. But yeah, we have a list, and I'm in contact with the realtors in town as well. Always monitor their websites and talk to them, so.
Fantastic, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we're gonna have a little update from our Assistant City Administrator, Brant Johnson. We'll give us a legislative priority update.
Looks like I took your job, Jason.
It's not motion, sorry.
You know what I meant.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jason.
Can be a confusing title sometimes.
Well, they didn't tell you?
It's okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, since the 2019, 2020 legislative session's about to end, staff wanted to give you an update to what's been going on down in Madison, and unfortunately, I don't have a video to show of all the action that's going on down there, but nonetheless. So we'll just go over some of the priorities that council adopted back in February of 2019, and then we'll review the proposals from those, and then also the funding priorities that council adopted. So back in February of 2019, council adopted a resolution to set out a number of goals and priorities to have down in Madison, and after that was adopted, we sent out letters to our council, or not our council, but our state delegation, which we'll introduce to the public here in a moment. But from there, this, I've also wanted to remind council of their, of why they passed those priorities. So they wanted to make sure that when we're talking to our legislators that we're using this as a guide to break the city's municipal interests and provide quality local services. And then, you know, this also allows us to outline our city positions to our legislative delegation, and then to actively advocate on the city's behalf, and then with all levels of government, so both state and federal. So in 2019, the state legislature convened January 7th, and then in the middle of that, about in summer, I think it was like around July 2nd or July 3rd, they passed their state budget. And from that state budget, that there came a lot of priorities that were important to us and which we'll get into. And then the 2019, 2020 legislative session's about to end in mid-March. The Assembly has already said that they're gonna stop for the rest of the year, and then in mid-March, about the third week of March, the Senate will take a couple days to be on the floor to address some issues and address some legislation. And as of February 25th, only 103 acts have become law, so I thought you would want to know that. And so this is our state delegation. So our state representative is Shannon Zimmerman, and then our state senator is Patty Shatner. And our US representatives are currently Ronkind, and then we, there's also an election gonna happen in April 7th for, to determine who our North Division US Representative will be. And then our US senators are Ron Johnson and Tammy Baldwin. So I've also provided you tonight, just a kind of handout that shows all of our legislative priorities, and not all those priorities were addressed by the Assembly or the Senate this year, so I'm just gonna be covering some of the ones that were actually covered down there in Madison this year. So one of the biggest ones that we advocated for, and actually something that got passed and signed by the governor, was addressing biannual budgeting. Unfortunately, they kind of chose some, they kind of decided to do it in the opposite of what we do. So what we do is, in the bill, they wanted to have odd-numbered years, so for a council like you or cities like us, wanted to start the budget, if you wanted to do a biannual budgeting process, you would have to do it this way. And then I did provide a separate memo to, that explains that more in detail. We do have, there is a legislative amendment out there right now, unfortunately, that won't be able to pass this year, most likely just because it's in the Assembly, and it's not gonna have enough time to get to the Senate for passage as well. Transportation funding was addressed in the Wisconsin Act 9, which is the 2019, 2021 Biannual Budget Bill for the state of Wisconsin. So in there, general transportation aids increased by 10%, and then mass transit increased by 2% for populations under 50,000. And then over $19 million in transportation grants for cities were awarded, not awarded, but authorized as well, and the city did put an application in for a ped bridge over here on the side. And we have yet to hear about that. Emergency detention beds is another big one that we have advocated for. So a couple of these, there have been a couple of bills out there that have been addressed. So AB 633, generally this is for transportation of individuals by a law enforcement agency other than our own. So another law enforcement agency, another ambulance service, or a third-party vendor to transfer an individual for emergency detention. AB 639, reimbursement of housing patients. So this is essentially a pilot program by the Department of Health of Human Services to reimburse hospitals in northwestern Wisconsin counties, so that includes Pearson, St. Croix. Up to 80% of the difference is housed patients for the purpose of emergency detention. And we actually had Chief Young down there to testify down in Madison, so they were sure to listen then. And then we had SB 405, so this is, the legislature would award $15 million for the addition of 22 psychiatric beds in Eau Claire County and Chippewa County hospitals. It should be noted that all these bills have been passed by the Assembly, and now they're, they've been sent to the Senate for approval. So it's most likely that these would be passed by the Senate, and then we'll see some help with emergency detention beds up here. Closing dark store loopholes, this has been a big issue with the league of Wisconsin municipalities and us as well. So there are, there were some bills earlier in the year that were, that were brought up, but they did not pass committee. So these are the newer ones that have been brought up, so SB 95, 96, and 97. SB 96 has passed the Senate. It is going into the Assembly for passage potentially, but that's gonna take until next year. But essentially, these bills address, they're easier to accurately assess commercial properties and defend those assessments against dark store challenges brought by certain retail And then we have legislative funding priorities. So the jug handle is projected to start this summer, I believe it's, is it June or July? July, yes. So that, initial estimates are at about 2.4 million, and then County Highway FF, State Highway 29 intersection. So this design is considered 60% complete, and it should be noted that there is no city funds in this, so this is a state project there. And then with the University of Wisconsin River Falls Science and Technology Building, in that Wisconsin Act 9, the Biannual Budget Bill, the legislature did authorize $2 million for the university to develop preliminary plans for their sci-tech building. So that's it. Is there any questions that can answer for you?
Questions?
Can you, or maybe Scott can shine some light on it, but what, and if it was in your memo, I apologize, I missed it, but why, why the odd years for the, for Act 42? Is there some logic behind it, or did they just come up with that in a?
It was for the fall of state. So the state of Wisconsin does their budgeting.
There, I apologize. Okay, it was, so it's part of the state budgeting process?
No, and then, in addition to that, Washington County also advocated to have that language inserted, so that's why it's also in there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I missed that in your memo.
But you did say they have an amendment in there now, so we'll be able to keep doing it the way we do it.
Well, we were able to do that anyways, just because of the way that we've been doing our biannual budgets in the past. That hasn't, this bill won't affect that in a way, but this, it would just make, it just makes it easier for us.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
I do have a question.
Yep.
That 29 at County FF, they're going out of town. They've elected not to do that roundabout. From what I read, correct me if I'm wrong, they are putting in a dedicated left-hand turn lane?
Yeah.
Section?
Yes, Krista will come up and explain that a little bit better than I can.
It's just something new that I haven't caught in the past, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, so I do have 60% plans at my desk now, and they are showing a left-hand turn lane, and basically a left straight and a right on, from both sides on 29.
So between you and the chief, if I might ask, what are the majority of the major traffic crashes out there? Are they rear ends? Are they cross-traffic? T-bones? I mean, how do the max accidents typically play out, maybe on an average or broad scheme?
That's something that I would have to look into. From my knowledge, since I've been here, we haven't had many. Before I've gotten here, I heard that there was some pedestrian serious injury accidents there, that they're actually crossing 29.
Yeah, I've personally seen a few accidents out there, and they've been pretty tragic.
Yeah.
Is there any plans by the state to do anything for cross-traffic or speed reduction? I know we've talked about that in the past, and it didn't seem like they were doing that? Is there any change on that?
There isn't on their current plan. It's important to note that that project was, the 29 project is to be constructed from Prescott all the way to River Falls and through Cemetery Road, and the intent was a pavement resurfacing. I don't believe that the intent of the project was to improve safety, unfortunately.
Right.
So I think that's part of the reason we're not seeing some of that stuff.
All right. I just wanted to note it, that, you know, it's an unsafe location out there, and there's gonna be a lot more traffic, especially with that whole area being developed and growing, and it'd be nice if the state took a better look at that in the future, because I know they're not now, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else got anything? No? Okay, thanks, guys. Now we're gonna, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on a request for a Class B beer license and Class C wine license for JR KM Management doing business at Swinging Bridge Brewery at 122 South Main Street. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, I will close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will take a, I don't know what I'll take for this. Take a motion? Whatever you want to give me.
Motion.
Grant a request for a Class B beer license and a Class C wine license, JR KM Management doing business at Swinging Bridge Brewery, 122 South Main Street.
Second. Okay, questions and comments?
Mr. Mayor, I normally ask my three questions, but because Mr. Hanson is already a agent, I will, don't see the need to.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. I'll move on to the consent agenda. First, acknowledging the following minutes, the River Falls Housing Authority from 1/8, Utility Advisory Board from 1/20, the West Central Wisconsin Biosalage Facility Commission from 11/21/19, 12/19/19, and then the EMS Advisory Board from 1/6, the Historic Preservation Commission from 1/9, the Planning Commission from 1/7. And next is a resolution awarding the bid for the Police Department remodel and addition project at 2015 Prairie Drive. This would award the bid to Dell Construction Company. Next one is a resolution authorizing purchase of South Fork Substation MV Circuit Breakers. This would authorize an agreement with ElectroTech to purchase the medium voltage circuit breakers from them. And last one is a resolution awarding bid for sale and removal of city-owned house at 456 Hanson Drive. Does anybody like to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll consent agenda items 6 and 8.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent, agenda items 5A through F and 7.
Second. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one comment on the Housing Authority. Last council meeting, I brought up something that was on that. I'm not gonna go into great detail. I just want to emphasize the, you know, we don't consider a high-crime neighborhood over on Kennedy, but there are a lot of neighbors concerned with some of the riffraff that goes on over there and some of the in-and-out traffic. We just ask that the Housing Authority and the Police Department continue to work together, which it sounds like they're starting to do. It'd be appreciated if they put more lighting, as they've proposed cameras across maybe their whole property, not just the park, because a lot of it happens behind the buildings, the fourplex there, the four quads. Other than that, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Downing, you polled 6?
Resolution awarding bid for Police Department remodel addition project at 2815 Prairie Drive. My question's more of an administrative question, and I noticed that 5% of that contingency plan is $116,500. Would this 5% be standard, or is that just more so for the construction of the police building specifically? Because I'm trying to figure out if it'd be better if it just be left to the 50,000 that our administrator can normally allow for spending himself, or if it's better to do it in the 5% amount that we're looking at here?
I've seen construction contingencies range from about 5 to 20%. So I would say a lower than 5% would not be typical. I haven't looked at a history of ours, but we probably haven't had more than a 10% or 12% contingency in some of our construction in the past, so. So there's a, there's a question for the council. The council could make a policy statement that you're only comfortable with a certain amount of discretion in that budget. You could require contingency items, all contingency items, to come back to the council. As this is written, where the expectation is that we pursue, any expenditures under that 4.5 would be considered budgeted items, and then you'd still have the normal purchasing process. So you're gonna have, if we have some kind of contracted item or something over that 50,000, it's gonna, in likelihood, it's gonna come back to the council, but three $25,000, four $25,000 items wouldn't necessarily need to come back to the council if they were separate items, because it would be considered a budgeted item. That's how, that's how I'm reading the resolution. So the council has some leeway to indicate their comfort level, because you're both approving the bid and then kind of setting the budget. Again, I mean, you've set this before in the CAP, the fiscal plan, but we try to show kind of what we're doing all through the different processes.
Would this 5% be a standard for a project like this, for most of our projects?
Um, we haven't built a police station in a while, so I would say.
That's what I'm saying, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say that we have a new city engineer, new project manager, so I would, if, our former city engineer would say he has a standard number for everything. So he would've said, on this type of project, we need 12% because there's, you know, this is involved or that involved. So I would say we do not have a standard contingency. There, we don't have a policy that I'm aware of. I don't think any of my others, any staff's aware of that. So it's really at the discretion of the project-by-project basis.
I think it would need to be relative to the risk of each individual project, you know.
Yeah. Just a comment, I guess, in my other life, in my daytime job, I deal with clients who do construction all the time. The typical contingency that I require or make them put in is starting at 10%, because it makes them recognize that there's things that are gonna happen. As they get closer in on the bids, as the bids start to firm up, if they want to drop that down after we get those bids, down into that 5 to 7 range, I get a little more comfortable. But typically, I'd say 10% across the board. Now, I think Mr. Watson pointed out too, it just sort of depends on the project. If it was, you know, something where we're digging down, we don't know what we're gonna find or something, then that's another story, but this is a rehab, so. I, I'm comfortable with 5% if 5% is what staff is recommending, because they've received bids back and can now tighten that up to 5%, but I'd be as comfortable up to 10 as well, so.
Yeah, there's two, two items, Councilmember Downing, that are still, I would say there's some discretion by staff for the spending, so that's that contingency, and then the furniture and equipment. The other numbers there are essentially things that if you approve the construction base and alternate bid, we've made commitments or have a firm understanding what the costs are for those other line items. So the two line items here that, and I'm not advocating that our furniture and equipment is the contingency line either, but, you know, obviously, if there's something that comes up in the project, we will buy the furniture and equipment last in order to give us that ability to be cautious about it. But 5% construction contingency here seems... five percent construction contingency here seems adequate, given the nature of the public bidding process, and that these bids were pretty close, the lower, lower ones, so we're not thinking we've got some super-duper-low deal that, um, we're gonna get in and start to get a lot of change orders. But there is, there's always risk in these projects to do that. So I would say if your aim is to lower our contingency number, I would not recommend that. If your aim was to increase it, that'd be up to, up to the council. I don't think we'd have objection. And if your aim is to have just a little bit more clarity about what the items would be spent, then you would need to take a separate action to, to have those come back to you. Otherwise, you may not see anything come back to you as long as it's within the budget.
For me, I, my aim is to find a standard for this particular project. I think five percent's fine, but I think we should examine what that would be for each individual project more in the future, so, like Councilmember Morris that was referring to. So, um, I move approval for resolution awarding a bid for Police Department remodel and addition project at two-eight-one-five Prairie Drive.
Second.
Question, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Downey, are all opposed? You pulled number eight, too?
Resolution awarding proposal for sale and removal of city house owned at four-five-six Hanson Drive. Well, I think it's great because they're paying us.
Saving nineteen grand.
Yeah, we're saving some money here. I can tell that they, you know, they tried to sneak under here with putting an extra dollar to make sure they secured that bid. I'm just curious, if we had extra time, could've we gotten a better deal, because clearly someone's gonna make some money on that house, but I also understand there's a sense of urgency, just getting this done.
I'd like to throw, throw in, if I could, you know, it was gonna cost us roughly twenty grand to do a demo and uh, restore that property, and we're getting a thousand dollars out of the deal, so really, we saved nineteen grand.
Yep.
I think it's a fantastic move on the city staff's part to, to take that offer.
So it's a good deal, but had we had more time, do you think we could've, could've we gotten a better deal?
Good evening, I'm Tom Schwal, and I handled, handled the, arranging for the, the bidding. We publicly noticed it, uh, for two weeks, and there was, I think I had three calls. So there, the, the challenge with it is having a lot to move it and then the path to get it from point A to point B. So, um, there wasn't a lot of interest, so.
Tom, of those calls you got, just out of curiosity, were they regarding the demo, or were they also regarding moving it?
Moving it, just.
Re-removes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
So it says in there that, uh, the new property owner, which in this case was a local person, is responsible for the moving, moving, you know, the full traffic and, uh, traffic control. Um, does, do they work with the city on that, and are we willing to work with them on making sure that they can get to their location safely?
In the municipal code, there's a section of, for obtaining a moving permit, and it goes through the, the code enforcement officer. So there's, although it hasn't been done for several years in the city, um, there's a process to do it.
It'd be interesting to see that alternate route go right down Main Street.
No, it wouldn't.
Parade.
Real quick, um, if we extended this by two more weeks, do you think we'd get a better, a better bid or not?
I do not believe we would.
Okay, thank you. All right. I move approval for a resolution awarding proposal for sale and removal of city-owned house at four-five-six Hanson Drive.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to, uh, a resolution approving Sterling Pond's Park Plan. And that, our city, one of our city planners, Sam, uh, is going to give us a little presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the draft Sterling Pond's Park Plan that city staff has been working on for over a year now. Um, it was reviewed and forwarded to you with a positive recommendation by the Park and Recreation Advisory Board at their January fifteenth meeting. The purpose of the Sterling Pond's Park Plan is to determine if the park adequately serves the surrounding neighborhood and recommend improvements accordingly. In the early two thousands, the entire area was planned for residential development, with half of the neighborhood being converted to the Sterling Pond's Corporate Park following the housing market crash. This plan takes an in-depth look at the existing facilities, park acreage, impact fees, and demographics in the neighborhood. Currently, the park consists of two outlots, one developed and one undeveloped. The developed outlet has a basketball half-court volleyball pit, playground, trees, benches, and picnic tables, and a large grass field. The undeveloped park outlet is rocky, ungraded, and unmoded in its current state. A berm in poor condition screens the park and surrounding properties from State Highway thirty-five. An additional future parkland is depicted to the southeast of the existing park on the neighborhood's original preliminary plat. So this image is rotated by forty-five degrees. Southeast would be directly to the right of what you see. This map depicts all land in the neighborhood dedicated to the public in green, and in addition to that, there are multifamily developments providing onsite park improvements as well. While only the Sterling Pond's Park is dedicated as parkland, and that's the green area with the yellow star on it, uh, towards the bottom of the map, a large swath of stormwater ponds and wetlands provides passive outdoor recreation opportunities outside the park's boundaries, and that would be sort of the green band you see running through the map. Currently, informal trails that the city does not mow surround existing stormwater ponds as depicted in the photo. Additionally, the large wooded mound next to Old Jersey Road is protected by the D N R Urban Green Space Program and has potential to be used for hiking or disc golf. While this area is zoned conservancy, areas in the similar, or areas in the city with similar features are zoned parked. For example, Hoffman Park and Golf View Park. I got an email from Reed when we were discussing all of this before he left, that the primary function of those areas is stormwater banishment, but does not preclude other recreational uses. Finally, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board members mentioned that the Sterling Pond's neighborhood likely features more paved paths and undeveloped open space than any other neighborhood in River Falls. During the project process, city staff met with Public Works and Park Board for ideas for which park amenities are the most desired and the most feasible. Additionally, staff administered a new Sterling Pond's Park survey this past summer. This map depicts how much housing has been added to the neighborhood since the two thousand and ten survey. Um, the newer housing is depicted in pink, so that justified the need to administer a new survey, and both the two thousand and ten and two thousand and nineteen surveys are included in the plan. The top three choices in the survey responses this past year were more paved paths and trails, a picnic shelter, similar to what you see in Highview Meadows Park, and a grassed ballfield with a simple backstop. These facilities align with what Public Works and Park Board members said throughout the planning process, as well as the two thousand and ten survey. Additionally, the Park Board voted to recommend a small area for dogs within the neighborhood of this plan somewhere. This concept layout depicts recommended parks improvements in possible but not final locations. To maximize existing parkland without the additional expenses of grading mowing the undesirable portion of the park, city staff recommends adjusting the park boundary and undedicating the excess portion of the park for neighborhood-oriented development, such as a small office or daycare center. This also fulfills the need for commercial use within the traditional neighborhood development zoning district. Staff takes the removal of any parkland seriously, and in this case, we're recommending, um, a preferred developed park with a greater variety of recreational amenities in a higher-quality environment, rather than just looking at acreage and having a sparsely-developed park. Staff also recommends preserving the access cut-throughs to the future plats expected to the southwest of the park. You can see that towards the right of the image, sort of a pedestrian cut-through to a future road. Beyond the park's boundary, staff recommends formalizing the mowed trails throughout the stormwater ponds with signage that includes permitted uses. This is important when you have functioning stormwater infrastructure. A paved path along Hubert Street is planned as part of the road's eventual reconstruction, as well as another path over Old Jersey Road that also functions as an emergency access into the neighborhood. Finally, imposing a b, a berm easement and upgrading the berm itself along Highway thirty-five will enhance the visual buffer between the neighborhood and the park and the traffic. The cost of all improvements is approximately six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in today's money, with most of the improvements being funded as impact fees continue to be collected as lots develop. Assistance from TIF, the street fund, and the capital improvement plan may be considered for specific projects. In summary, this plan maximizes community resources while improving park services as the neighborhood continues to expand. Thank you for listening.
Questions?
Sam, I, this was years, years, years ago now, but I believe it was a plan commission meeting where we dealt with, maybe it was a joint plan and park, uh, commission meeting, where we dealt with the citizens in Sterling Pond's who came in, and we actually had little tiny cutouts of uh, basketball courts and benches and pavilions and so forth. Was any of that data found or reviewed in, in this process, do you know?
No, you're the first person to mention this to me.
Yeah, it was, you know, the, there's some, there's been some tumultuous history with the, with the residents out there. Um, and as part of that, we brought them in, um, had it in the training room and, and did a pretty extensive, what would you like to see, where would you like to see it type of, of longer-term plan. It might be interesting to see if we could locate that.
Well, and I have a question, too. What, does the city typically put these parks in? I know when I played developer, I had to put them in, and so I'm kind of curious how this all came about.
Think that has more to do with the history of the situation than it does anything else.
So I'm wondering if the deal changed when, when the market crashed and part of it became industrial park. And maybe it doesn't matter, but.
Yeah, I don't want to speak too much out of turn. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if you're considering the activity surrounding the two thousand and ten survey. Does that seem.
That, that could be.
Outright to you for time?
Yeah, I mean, I, I came on the council in two thousand and ten.
Uh, because I don't recall the specific planning activity you're talking about, but I, I would not question that that might have occurred as far as, um, the Park Board went. Um, and we also did some planning when we purchased the property. We did some planning around what would this all, how would the transition occur? But I don't recall the specific, um, event. I know we did the surveying to try to figure out what we're gonna do for the park, because, um, to answer the question, I think I can answer the question about how these parks are developed. So we have the park impact fees in our policy, policy in a, in a general sense. Not a general sense. Specifically, the policy sets aside a certain amount of that impact fees for the local park or local park improvements, and then the other is, is for regional. Do you know, Sam, if it's sixty, forty?
It's sixty, forty. I think sixty goes regional and forty goes to neighborhood.
So in this case, the, and the regionals are, um, Ryan De Sanctus, Hoffman, and Glen Park are the regionals. Um, and impact fees are to be used for, you know, improvements and things related to additional growth, so it's not just, you know, seal coating the parking lot or something, it's, it's to do improvements. And so, in the case of this park, um, which would have been about that same time in two thousand and ten, so it might have been when we did the, the original swing set and basketball and that.
I believe the result was what we have out there today.
We typically don't, we typically at that time in two thousand and ten had not built the parks ahead, meaning we waited until we had the impact fees from that neighborhood, the forty percent, to try to pay for the improvements. At that time, the, you know, housing stopped, um, or slowed down. I guess it never stopped. We had just, it, it came down, and so we had Highview Meadows and Sterling Pond's, and this is how I recall the, um, the history there, where, let's say they might have had twenty-five thousand dollars in the fund for the local park, but even the basic improvements were seventy-five thou, you know, the, the playgrounds itself cost twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. So the council, I believe, it might have been right before, um, two thousand, it might have been right when I came in, Councilmember Cafflish, I think, served, um, that, this, that.
He was District One at the time?
District One. And so he made a request because Highview Meadows and, um, Sterling Pond's both had, were in that district, I think, at the time, or parts of them were, could we kind of borrow ahead? You know, the, the, the neighborhood was kind of stalled. Could we get some park amenities in? And so at the time, the council said, okay, so we basically spent more money than, than was collected, um, on those two parks. That's how I recall, and so I think.
Yes, that's, that's what I recall as well, now that you say that, Scott.
You may be referencing a meeting we had regarding both Highview and Sterling Pond's, where we talked about, um, benches and that, and we also probably had one for Highview Meadows that you might be thinking of, too.
I, I think we did, I, I remember being at both of them, and I remember giving them the, the speech about, we don't have the money today, but we're willing to make some investment. Where would you like to see, what would you like to see if and when the funds become available down the road as well?
Right, and as I remember, then we had some neighborhood build in both of those. I know we at least had it in Highview Meadows, but I think we had some neighbor help.
Yes.
Because there was, the council said, well, we'll, we'll pay ahead, but we're not gonna do the whole plan.
Correct.
Um, and then the neighbor said, well, can we pay for these trees or do this or that? And so we kind of had some help. I know the pavilion in Highview Meadow, if I remember right, I'm looking for other historians of the city to shake their heads, um, they helped us with that. So that's how I remember the history, is there was some planning around the, let's get a basic park going. Because at that time, we didn't have the one in, uh, let's see, Knollwood, Highview Meadows or Sterling Pond's. We just had kind of patches of marginal grass, um, and we were waiting to use the fees, but we hadn't collected, um, a ton of fees. Since then, then we've collected fees, um, and we've been monitoring that. I'd say Highview Meadows may be getting close to caught up. Sterling Pond's still, I doubt, is caught up to what we initially spent. And, but then we wanted to go through the formal plan of actually figuring this out, especially because there's this question about the amount of total acreages put in, um, in reserve here, which seemed like there should be a question of the plan, or the Park Board about what we should do. So that's how we kind of got down this path. Am I missing anything, Sam, that you remember as far as how this got assigned and we ended up going down this route?
Not that I can think of offhand. I know the two thousand and nine park inventory, at that point, there's no facilities in that document.
Yeah, it would have been after two thousand and ten, because that's when I came on the council, April ten.
Remember, not as much Highview Meadows, um, but this place in particular, and it still has some of those challenges. I mean, it wasn't, it was a little rocky, it wasn't.
It was contentious.
Not very, no, I meant rocky, like physically, there's rocks.
Like it was a little bit of a tough conversation.
But, you know, that was part of that conversation of the city was purchasing the property for, um, Sam never dreamt he was going down this rabbit hole when he.
Sorry, Sam.
Um, but it's relative to why we're doing the planning and the history of the neighborhood, but at the time, the city was purchasing a property that was stalled. We had modifying the, the plan, um, or the vision at least, that was given from the residential developer. And so there was some questions at the time saying, well, we haven't even got the park, we don't, you know, this hasn't even been done, these things were promised. And some of those things, the developer essentially was promising as part of their amenity package, and they never did, nor will they, um, do, nor did the city have an agreement that required them to do them. It was things that the developer was selling as part of their, you know, it's a very attractive neighborhood, tree-lined streets, and we're gonna do these green spaces, and we're gonna put trails all through the stormwater, uh, areas, and, you know, they didn't have to do that. That was things they were saying they were gonna do as amenities to the development. And so that, that I remember, Councilmember Cafflish and others saying, well, we feel strongly that even though the developer promised all this, we're gonna, we're gonna come in here and try to do some of it. But even at the time, the council was saying, all these tr, paved trails all through the stormwater ponds, that's not something the city's planning to do in the future. We, but it's part of the reason we put some extensive paved trails into the corporate park area to, to give some additional trail, um, trails for that, so. And then as, as Sam has mentioned, the Park Board recommending that we do, um, and we don't, I don't think we know when or who put in the grass trails, but they seem to be working pretty well, um, so that they're now incorporated, parts of them are incorporated into our formally, what we're recommending you adopt as kind of the plan, so that means. So that means if the neighbors or whomever are mowing them now, stop mowing them, then that will be part of the city's responsibility to keep those maintained. Obviously, won't be plowing grass, well, I shouldn't say obviously. We're not planning to, to mow or maintain in the winter the grass, grass trails. And, and a big portion of the six hundred thirty-five thousand is the paved trails that we would do in conjunction with Hubert, Hubert. So that's not an, that's not something that's going to happen the next year that's down the road. So, so Sam would be happy to answer questions about the planning. Does that answer the questions about?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
We're kind of put some of the history back together?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Can you go down to like page thirty-four? It's down like two or three slides? That one? So that slide we were just looking at doesn't really do justice. If you drive down Newcastle, which is the one that curves down into there, and then Glasgow, where the, in the bottom of the screen, those are filling up. A lot of those lots are already sold, pre-sold. So you look at the green dots on the bottom right, that's a pretty tight-knit neighborhood. These folks know each other, they play with each other, their kids get together, there's a ton of kids in them neighborhoods. They do a lot of outings throughout the summer, and where the whole neighborhood gets together, they go into this park. National Lightout was a huge example of what they've done. I, I think for that neighborhood, I think they would definitely like to see, talking to one of the fathers out at the daddy's daughter dance the other night, he lives down there, and he was talking about how his kids get down there with other kids, and they enjoy that park. Baseball field, that kind of stuff, yeah. I, I think it's definitely a cost that we have to look at in the future, especially with all those little pink dots. You start looking at the Cambridge, where it goes up on the top there, a lot of those lots are full, people have moved in. Some of those are older folks that live up on the Cambridge side, but down in that lower side, it's all young families that have kids and are growing up there.
So this map is an appendix in the back of the plan? I can't remember, actually have it in front of me. I do have the month of the data from when this was taken, but yes, there's been plenty of permits pulled since then. This is from August, so. Yep.
I have a question, and maybe our, well, you can answer it or our planning director, but the berm easement piece of this, are we planning on acquiring an easement for the entire length of the berm throughout Sterling Ponds, or just for this section from the neighborhood commercial area down to the southeast corner?
So you're asking about the piece extending northwest all the way up to the interchange or towards the interchange?
Correct.
I think we are the owner of.
We are the owner.
The property, but I, we'd have to verify.
Offhand, I didn't look that far.
There's DOT land, and then there's corporate park lot, and I'm not sure. Do you want to comment about that? But I think we have, I think that's a question we can answer, Councilmember Watson, we can probably research that for you for sure. But I believe in the corporate park, we've, we have either easement or own the actual berm.
Okay.
But there's, there's enough question in my mind, and I want to get back to you on it, because I think there's D, I'm not sure where the DOT and our property and the lots all come together there. But I don't think there's any, I don't know of anything in the private lots that we've sold that is preventing us from.
Improving it or doing anything like that.
The berm, and I, I'm pretty sure the city staff did the maintenance on that berm last fall.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you for now.
Anybody else have anything for Sam?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the park board for making a really nice variety for that part of the city, which some of the residents feel like they may have been forgotten, because some of the difficulties of be, of being a corporate park and, you know, and coming up to speed today. So thanks, everyone on the park board for getting us into twenty twenty as a group and a fantastic plan. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the resolution adopting the Sterling Ponds Park Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Next would be a resolution approving Wisconsin DNR Fire Department Memorandum of Understanding for Mutual Aid and Fire Suppression Services. And I will take a.
I move to approve the Wisconsin DNR and Fire Department Memorandum of Understanding for Mutual Aid and Fire Suppression Services.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to the Administrator's Report. If anybody's got anything for Scott?
Just one clarification. Appreciate Brant's presentation on the legislative, and he was kind to the legislature in his characterization of what they got accomplished. So the Wisconsin Seventh District election is May twelfth. So that's, that's one that, there was some timing issues related to that. So we just had the special primary.
Primary.
Trying to get the name of everything correct. And then it's a special election on May twelfth. So the clerk gets lots of opportunity to show you how good she is at running elections because we have extra bonus special elections this year, May twelfth is that one. So Wisconsin Seventh is May twelfth. Just wanted to make sure you were that. So appreciate, I know we don't get a chance to celebrate too much, but the, the police department bid is a big deal. This is a great accomplishment for the community, the council's vision about where they wanted to go with facilities, their support of the public safety facilities, feasibility a ways back, and, and your ability to be flexible when opportunities arise. So I know there's lots of excitement about that project and happy to get it, get it going. And I think it's something we'll be proud of. So, so thanks to everybody with their work to get us this far. It's, it's been, it's been a fun project to be part of so far, and we haven't, haven't even dug any holes or anything yet, so that'll be good. So we had, in my Administrator's Report, I covered a few things. We had about forty people at the FERC meeting. We'll continue with studies. I'd say that the summary of that event was that the plan that the city set out is still the plan that FERC and, from what I could tell, the stakeholders are in favor of proceeding with. People are still waiting, we have a lot of data to collect and a lot of studies to finish up this year. So we'll hopefully that, that will confirm that we're kind of on the right path. And it'll continue to go through next year with some of the, the, about next, this time next year, we'll be talking about kind of the second full year of studies and where we go from here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are you okay? Okay. Next move on to the Comptroller's Report.
Okay, the Comptroller's Report for January twenty twenty. General front revenues through the end of January were seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twelve cents, and include the January property tax settlement and first quarter transportation aids. Expenditures for the same period were six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, for a net of revenues over expenditures of sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-five cents.
Thanks, Diane. No, there's nothing for a grow to share on there. Sorry, I should have said that.
Then I move to adjourn.
Wait, one, one thing.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. I just have a couple appointments I'd like to make. First, I'd like to, I got two people that want to be reappointed to the Business Improvement District Board. It'd be Mike Miller through December of twenty-two, and it'd be Amy Oliverston through December of twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we accept your appointments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.